Yeah, so my name is Grant Flamig. We're with MPBD for seventeen years and really enjoying that time. And this is kind of on my aspiration list to get into this role for retail side or wholesale side of MPBD's business. And the opportunity came up. Stan's retiring for state senate, and so he retired at the beginning of the year and I took over. Nate's still part-time for the transition and kind of handoff. So my goal is to get out, meet all the city councils, the village board members, just to get out there and say, hey, this is the new guy. Call me if you need plates, here's my card. I know that's kind of seems backwards, but that's what I'm here for. So I want to be transparent, open and honest, and so we have, whether it's good or bad, I want to be able to be available for you guys. I left a sheet in front of all the council members, just kind of goes over the energy report for the community. On the very left there, kind of probably the most important part, MPBD collected and remitted one point three million dollars in lease payments to the city and one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in the city sales tax in twenty-three. So that's just kind of a little snapshot of twenty-three. Gross revenue tax paid to Willow County, half million dollars. Some of that obviously trickles down to you guys as well. So just kind of some fun facts there. Energy efficiency incentives, so in twenty-three, this is a snapshot of all the efficiency, energy efficiency payouts, dollar amounts that were paid out to Cook customers. So we had nineteen thousand dollars. That's not a lot, but some communities haven't had any, they just don't know about some of our programs that we have, some of our financial kickbacks that you can get. And I can send those, some of those to you Nate, if you want to do some, you know, inserts in some of your water billings or something like that, just say, hey, you know, this is stuff we have available for you, whether it's EV charging station at your home, could be anything down to thirty-dollar tune-up credit on your HVAC system. So it's pretty nice, people don't know about that, so we want to promote that stuff. And then on the right side, fifty-six percent carbon-free, so with that carbon-free footprint, nuclear is wrapped up with that. So if you don't know, we do have a nuclear generation facility in Brownsville on Missouri River. It's becoming more and more popular, especially in a smaller, smaller form. So we're looking at adding some, some sort of new generation and maybe including some nuclear, more of that. It's proven, I mean, we, for years, we put Navy members in submarines and it's the same concept, just on the, so it's fairly safe, so don't get too scared, I'm not trying to get you all worried, but that is on the horizon. On the backside, kind of some more numbers, ninety-three thousand commercial and industrial customers, we surveyed the communities, actually, it's going to be eighty-one. Lodge Pool, Nebraska's coming online, becoming a retail customer, just added Paxton, Nebraska as well, not too long ago, beginning of this year. And another highlight, again, we're very diverse, like in the front, on the front of the page, wind, coal, nuclear, gas, solar, a little bit of everything. Some of those, as you might know, that we are part of the Southwest Power Pool. Southwest Power Pool means that we are a big collective group of utilities across eight states that we are able to submit our excess generation and off-sell that to other states and other utilities, and it's a huge benefit to, not only the MPBD, but our customers. You might remember some of that wholesale credit, PCA credit that came on your lease payment, or even on your bills, you'd see it. It actually dropped off beginning of this year, but the last three years, I think, we had PCA credit that was given, kickback to all our customers. And then lowest rates in the US, obviously, we're very proud of that. The last eleven years, we've had zero percent increase in our retail rates. Pretty unsaid, when you look consider, I don't know what else is not going up in price. I mean, everything, right? So our rates, our retail rates have stayed steady on our, on the zero percent increase. With the bad news, that's not going to be forever. Actually, we're looking at a two percent increase next year, on average, across the retail side, so just, I don't have more communication about that, but the board voted on that last month and it was approved, so two percent increase next year. With that, has anybody got any questions? I'll try to answer them. Awesome. I am as well, and I appreciate you having me. I apologize for the miscommunication with last month, I was on the agenda, but.
It's busy right now.
Yeah. Yep. And it was kind of stormy that night.
It was.
Well, oddly enough, I was at, I was in Luke City that night, so, and I, yeah, I was thinking, I was talking to you, I don't know what happened.
Okay, so it's good to have you come out here, and we're welcome working with you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
The consent agenda is approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda may, by the request of any single council member or public, be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Any item on the consent agenda, okay? Staff, anything? Anybody in the public? Okay, we have a motion.
All the consent agenda make a motion that we accept items A through H.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So we need discussion.
I will vote in.
Let's see what happens. Let's see what happens, okay.
Trying to still, it's lighting up.
All right.
Should I, I want to log out.
Okay. You in now?
I also forgot. I didn't say.
There we go.
Oh, me now?
Yeah. Okay, four votes cast J, no votes cast May. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. We've got a presentation from Erica Bush with West Central Nebraska Development in regards to properties in their designated area that should be declared a nuisance, properties that should be rescinded from the previous declaration of nuisance and properties that need abating. Do we have a motion to?
Tonight, I will be presenting on the 2024 McCook Nuisance Abatement Program.
Just one second.
Sorry.
This is the presentation. Okay. Sorry about that, Erica.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen here. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Good evening, Erica Bush with West Central, and tonight I will be presenting on the 2024 McCook Nuisance Abatement Program. May. On our agenda tonight, we are recommending for one property to be declared a nuisance by resolution, two properties for a motion to abate, and ten properties for a resolution to rescind, and I will go over each property individually. First on our agenda, we are recommending a property to be declared a nuisance, and I would just like to remind you that every motion or every step that we take forward just provides a property owner with additional time to clear the, or to clear the nuisance items. So when we declare our property a nuisance, we provide that property owner with a letter that has an additional deadline of about three to four weeks for them to clear those items, as well as a motion to abate, which is just a motion, but it's just another step forward, and all property owners will receive a letter giving them additional time to clean up. So this first property, 2024 MCC 077 at 1007 Zuri Avenue, and this picture is for identification purposes only. This property has scrap wood, and the scrap wood that is neatly stacked is of no concern. It's discarded scrap wood on the property, as well as a plastic sheeting, scrap iron. This picture will show you, again, the trailer is always changing, so the trailer with the metal is of no concern because it wasn't there last month, it was empty, so it obviously is for recycling. So the items of concern in this picture would be kind of along the building, and it looks like scrap wood or scrap iron. Next picture, you can see the discarded items, scrap wood, scrap metal, the plastic sheeting, concrete blocks, cinder blocks. And again, you can see the cinder blocks or the broken concrete, the broken trash can, the discarded chair, scrap wood, scrap iron. And that is the only property I'm recommending to declare a nuisance for tonight. Would you like me to stop while you guys make a motion or just continue?
We'll continue with it. Go ahead.
Okay. Next, I am recommending a motion to abate for the following two properties, and again, doesn't mean we're going to go abate tomorrow, gives them additional time. 2024 MCC 052 at 1012 Missouri Avenue. And this property actually has cleared some, but the remaining items are scrap wood, scrap, excuse me, scrap metal, unlicensed vehicle, unfortunately, my review was at the beginning of July, and these tags are from June, so they were expired. As you can see, the scrap iron, the scrap wood, the lattice, it looks like that pallet's being used as part of their porch patio decor, so it'd be the lattice and the scrap metal. Scrap wood, the lattice, it looks like a frame of some sort. A packing tree. Tires, and the trailer with the broken concrete and the cinder blocks. Trailers are for hauling and not storing. Next property, 2024 MCC 088 at 1413 West Fourteenth Street. This property, I showed a comparison from what it looked like in June to July, and usually when there's weed or yard debris, sometimes it covers those nuisance items, so I just wanted to point that out, that nuisance items still remain, it's starting to get a little covered up by the yard debris. So there is. So we have scrap wood, scrap metal, buckets, barrels, or receptacles. Porch, there are some items, some tools, scrap wood, scrap metal, carpet or plastic sheeting. Under the porch, you can still see the coolers and the receptacles that were there the previous month and the previous month before that. That is my recommendation for a motion to abate. I have not had any communication from these property owners. And next would be, I'm recommending for a resolution to rescind for the following ten properties. This first one, 2024 MCC 035, this is a three parcel lot, so it would be parcel ID 001054400, 001054300, and 001054200. 2024 MCC 069 at 1106 West 10. 2024 MCC 070 at 1104 West 10. 2024 MCC 078 at 1105 Missouri Avenue. 2024 MCC 085 at 1409 East Bear Acres. 2024 MCC 087 at 1415 West 14. 2024 MCC 094 at 1412 West 14. 2024 MCC 100 at 1416 West 15. 2024 MCC 102 at 1409 West 16. And 2024 MCC 105 at 1308 North Highway 83. And again, this is for a resolution to rescind, which means they have cleared the nuisance items that were first mentioned in the courtesy letter. And I would like to say that when McCook cleans up, McCook cleans up. So I'm actually having a great time at McCook. I was stopped about three times at my last review last week, but from property owners that had a lot of items, but wanted to work with me, wanted to clean up, so it's been really good so far. So in summary, we've reviewed two hundred and fifty-six properties, I sent out a hundred and ten courtesy letters, eighty-two properties have been cleared, which includes tonight's recommendations, twenty-five properties have been granted extensions, fifteen of those properties have not had their declared letters delivered yet, so because I have not received delivery verification, I can take no action at this time. One property, we are recommending to declare a nuisance, and two properties, we are recommending for a motion to abate, and ten properties, we are recommending to rescind, which means to clear. And that is it for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Have we had a motion? Providing the reservations of nuisance property as deemed by Western Nebraska Development and declared a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, council.
That's great.
Oh, is it?
Wonderful.
Good job.
All right, Jean made the motion, I second.
Okay. All those in favor of vote, yea, opposed, nay. Four votes cast J, no votes cast May. Okay, and then we are going to adopt resolution twenty-four, 2024-13 approving rescinding a portion of the previously declared nuisance property as deemed by Western, West Central Nebraska Development and as declared by resolution number 2024-13.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor of vote, yea, opposed, nay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
All these that are being declared, is to be cleared off the list, at 1416 West 15th Street, there's a steel Connex box, steel shipping container, do we know, is that part of the zoning pool up there? Cross street to west is CBS Constructors, so.
I think it's private residential.
Okay, so I would say that's not, not to be declared not a nuisance, but is, if we have steel shipping container in somebody's property, then that's not my code, so I don't know how we can clear it. I'm just curious, Erica, do you know what I'm talking about?
I'm sorry, I am kind of hard of hearing, so Zoom is hard when, when trying to listen, so if you could repeat that.
Yeah, I shared the hearing problems with you. 1416 West 15th Street, there's a steel Connex box, shipping container.
Okay.
That's just east of the two parking shelters, that has four vehicles under it. Is that Connex box allowed of there?
That, that doesn't go against the nuisance ordinance, we follow the nuisance ordinance, so not that I remember of McCook's ordinance does it go against to have that kind of a container, but I can definitely look into that if you would like.
Please, and thank you.
I will let Leanne know.
I'll let Leanne know. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, council?
Thank you.
I noticed at 1207 West 14, you might take a look at that, there is a truck on a trailer in a yard and a whole bunch of carts around there, and then there are weeds at 1408, and that property doesn't look like it's anybody's property, and it's no trespassing signs there, but it's solid weeds.
Is it 1408 West 14?
Yeah.
Okay, so I actually have had a conversation with that property owner, and I was looking into the zoning regulations because the property owner stated that the, he believes the first sixteen feet from the sidewalk onto the property is the city's responsibility. I've never heard that before, but I told him I would, I would, you know, look.
Right.
Was a thing, but I have never heard that before. So now that I have a response to that, I know how to move forward. Thank you.
Is it new?
That is good. Okay, anything else, council? Okay, all those in favor of vote, yea, opposed, nay. Is it good? You got everything?
I don't have it about yet.
Okay, I said I was disconnected, but now I'm connected.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Did you get it?
Yep.
Four votes cast J, no votes cast May. Okay, next item on the agenda is an update regarding the swimming pools and the ballpark project.
Yeah, I'll pass it over to Kyle, he actually had a chance to go up to the swimming pool today, stay with Nebraska inspectors, and let him kind of share the details of that conversation and where we're at.
I'd like to joke around about the opening day, I don't want to, I want to leave you to see tomorrow. As Nate stated, the, actually, going back to Friday, the state electrical inspector was out doing a couple of electrical work, everything checked out, actually fine with that, so we got to pass that hurdle. Today, we actually had a representative from Swim Time, they're the ones that provided all the mechanical equipment, they went through that with several of our employees, Tyler Kowinski, Ron Maris, Matt Coulter, and Debbie Kane, and we videotaped everything, walked them through everything, so we know enough to be dangerous, but it's going to take a little while on the system, but I have confidence that we will do that. You guys are taking it really seriously, and I appreciate that.
What was that, Swim Time?
Swim Time, yeah, the representative was from Swim Time. Also there today was Cherie, she's our representative from Carruthers, and also Jeff and Lampard Nielsen, they were both there during the inspections. We did have two, two state inspectors from this, two state inspectors from the state, obviously. They were out, there were just a few minor details that they need to address tomorrow, very minor, they needed to put up some additional fencing, we'll deal with, it's a long story, but not a big deal, they, matter of fact, they were putting that up as I, as I came down here. About four thirty, that's, so that's probably up, some authorized personnel, at least I and Cherie said I just forgot to grab them, so she's getting them, we'll get those, and then some site bulbs for testing and stuff that we're going to need to be installed, those should be here tomorrow, and inspectors will find out, she just needs to send us some pictures, and we'll be good there. The lifeguards and pool managers, I believe, all of them there, all of them with the exception of one or two that were out of town, were present today, did a few tests around the pool, they will be back tomorrow. After the inspection, Tyler Kowinski did sign off on the inspection, as he is our pool operator that's in-house, we will have four other pool operators that are on staff with the lifeguards and the pool managers. The plan is to open the swimming pool Wednesday at 1:00 PM with a ribbon, ribbon cutting to take place at 12:30, and the ribbon cutting will take place at the shelter house. The plan is to be open one to seven, seven days a week, since we do have a short swim season, that is continued on lifeguarding operators, but we're pretty confident we'll be able to go one to seven at least early on. And like I mentioned before, we do have four pool operators and one on staff, which is Tyler, and where that is important is in order to operate the pool, you have to have at least one of them there at all times, so. I'll tell you that, everything checked off, we should be good to go for Wednesday, I know there's been some questions about grass and screener system, we will be installing that this fall, once the pool shuts down. The parking lot itself will not be accessible this season, but we will be going in. Our Carruthers is still utilizing the parking lot for some things, but we're going to have to redo the parking lot, and they get it cleaned up, so hopefully we'll get that done later this year or first thing next year, so just have to park on the street and call the engine center and stuff from that. Very exciting, very exciting. I can't say enough about Lampard Nielsen, the engineer, and I can't say, I definitely cannot say enough about Carruthers, they have hidden out the park. Fantastic.
How many lifeguards did you say we have?
I'm thinking there were close to twenty there today. I don't have all their certificates, because some of them took their class this last week, so I'll know more in the next day or two, but I think they're going to be pretty close, and I think we might be able to get by with, as far as people actually, lifeguards actually present out at the pool, I think we might be able to reduce that a little bit than what we originally thought, but we'll see more around that, but based off my conversation with the inspectors today, we may be, maybe a little bit less than that, so we'll see. You don't know how tempting it was today, Jane's, I'm not sure, to jump on that slide today, but I didn't.
You could have been the first down.
I was, I put my hand in the pool, so I was the first one. Outside of that, we're just excited. It's going to be, it's going to be a madhouse up there on Wednesday, which I can't wait to see. I can't wait to see. We do have a max capacity of three hundred and sixty-nine.
Three sixty-nine.
So we will be counting, it would be awesome to have more than that, but I hate to terminate, but just, people be patient with us, we'll work through it, we'll make sure everybody gets an opportunity, so.
It's wonderful.
Speaking to one of the inspectors, goes to a North Platte, and she said she will be bringing her kids down to the McCook pool, so.
I'm sure there'll be a lot of kids that are excited.
Yes, it's something the, the community should be very proud of.
Yes. Hey, hopefully Mr. Will will have a lot of eyes, and, yeah.
Yes, and we do have, I'm trying to think here, I shouldn't say, we do have a couple of businesses in town that will be handing out some goodies, opening day, so.
Surprise, almost talked about towels.
Yeah, I was going to make it a surprise.
Surprise.
Surprise. And just, just to repeat, the McCook Community Foundation is covering the cost for admission this year, so we will still be having people sign in and keeping track of, of our attendees, but there is no charge for any, anybody that attends the pool, so.
And McCook Community Foundation is paid for the lifeguard.
Lifeguarding, yeah, absolutely, the pool operators, yes.
Then really the cost.
Yes, absolutely, it's definitely been a group effort.
A group effort, that's right. All work at the end of the year.
Absolutely.
Do we have security cameras up?
I think we might be able to reduce that a little bit than what we originally thought, but we'll see where we're at on that. But based off my conversation with the inspectors today, we may be, maybe a little bit less than that, so we'll see. You don't know how tempting it was today for Jean to jump on that slide today, but I didn't.
You could have been the first down.
I was, I put my hand in the pool, so I was the first one. Outside of that, we're just excited. It's going to be, it's going to be a madhouse up there on Wednesday, which I can't wait to see. I can't wait to see. We do have a max capacity of 369.
Three sixty-nine.
So we will be counting. It would be awesome to have more than that, but I hate to terminate, but just people be patient with us, we'll work through it. We'll make sure everybody gets an opportunity, so. Speaking to one of the inspectors, goes to a North Platte, and she said she will be bringing her kids down to the McCook pool, so.
I'm sure there'll be a lot of kids that are excited for that pool.
It's something the community should be very proud of.
Yes. Okay, hopefully Mr. Bill will have a lot of eyes, and, yeah.
Yes, and we do have, I'm trying to think here, actually, we do have a couple of businesses in town that will be handing out some goodies, opening day, so.
Surprise, we're talking about towels.
Yeah, I was going to make it a surprise. And just to repeat, the McCook Community Foundation is covering the cost for admission this year. So we will still be having people sign in and keeping track of our attendees, but there is no charge for any, anybody that attends the presentation, so.
And McCook Community Foundation is paid for the lifeguarding.
Lifeguarding, yeah, absolutely, and the pool operators, yes.
Then building the pool.
Yes, absolutely. It's definitely been a group effort.
A group effort, that's right. All working together.
Absolutely.
Do we have security cameras up there?
We do not. We have, we have the ability to add those down the road, but that was not part of our regional budget.
Cardi got a surprise.
Yes, indeed.
Well, if you saw what happened in Cardi.
Yep, yep. So that is something we ran conduit and everything for that type of thing, but again, that was not part of our budget. The sound system, it's my understanding, the sound system will be installed Wednesday morning, so we should be good there. And a refrigerator is being lowered tomorrow. Be important, be important.
And the toilets were?
The toilets were installed. I didn't flush them. I was saying, well, it's one of the sinks work and one of the soap dispensers.
Okay. Just thinking of all the necessities.
Absolutely. There are some things we need to, yeah, it's going to be trial by fire, I'm sure, but there's going to be a few things we probably missed out on. We'll make it right. Absolutely.
Thank you for all the work you've done.
You betcha. It's been a definitely a group effort. And it's just awesome to see this here. Long time coming.
Okay, now we have another ordinance coming up. Ordinance number 2024-380, amending the City of McCook's Code of Ordinances by Chapter 75, Section 75.1, including 75.99, under the title Seven, by the Code. Hi.
Hi. Can I move tables?
Sorry.
I'll second it.
Let me hear your statement, number 2024-380. Tell me, is Council meeting?
Tell me next, Council meeting, right, okay.
What's that reason?
Um, I think there's, we're still working on some details.
Yeah.
So we met, it was.
We don't have a, we don't have a second. Or you.
I did.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. It was much better.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Chief Iintera met this Friday, and we discussed the changes that we had talked about at the last council meeting. And Chief got us a good start on the ordinances. I made some changes. As I was doing so, I was doing a little bit more research. The more I thought about it, I don't know if it's just as easy as saying, yeah, we want kids in our restraint system. Restraint systems are made for cars and car seats. And the more I thought about it, I don't know if we know enough to, can we put a regular car seat in there? Will it attach the same way, or will that cause more safety concerns? So we have some ordinances ready to go. I just, it makes me nervous that we're rushing into this. So I did find there are some voluntary national standards, safety standards for UTVs, kind of like the federal standards for cars. Those are mandatory. These are voluntary for UTV users. But they do at least set forth some good guidelines. I'd like some more time to look at those and make sure we're applying those safety standards in the ordinances that we're bringing to the council. We have till January till these become effective, so I don't think there's any need to rush right now. We'll make sure everything's in place by January. Just give us a little bit more time to look at this issue.
I appreciate that.
Are you satisfied with the seatbelt then?
Yeah.
Not very much?
Yeah, I think we definitely, from the safety standards, the safety standards themselves have a seatbelt guideline, those voluntary standards that I was talking about. And I think we can go ahead and cite to those in our ordinance. But car seats, the one where I was really questioned. Yeah, and one option, I thought it was a good idea by Nate, the one option that we could save, we're really concerned about car seats, is no kids under the age of eight, which is the age that you can age out of a car seat in Nebraska. Just no one under eight allowed on these while they're in operation. Maybe that's the easiest way to go instead of saying everyone, but they have to have a car seat.
Because it is an open vehicle, I mean, the sides are open.
Yeah.
That's, that's a problem.
I agree, I see some big issues with that.
I, I think though other communities have addressed this, haven't they? Or are we the only one?
I did not see a requirement for a car seat in any of the sample ordinances I was looking at.
Amazing, amazing. So we're setting up standards that other communities haven't thought about.
Well, that's the problem when you don't have a statewide law. Everyone is going into this with, the state has resources to do studies, look at other states, what they've done. And we're kind of doing it by the seat of our pants, and that really makes me nervous when you're talking about kid safety.
Any other questions?
So we're voting to postpone till later date?
Yes.
January 1st will be the effective date for the year. So we've got time to, I got registrations and everything, so we got to work with the police department, so that way they're comfortable with registering and licensing. And that's our drop dead date, we have to have all this done.
I think about, I worked at the fairgrounds when we had the rides up there for the little kids. And, and they were being strapped in, but there was this one little person that was too small in order to get strapped in. And to explain to a little person, you're too tiny in order to do this, and tears rolling down the face. And I'm thinking as families, you know, I know that we have to be responsible, but so do they. And so what the person at Freedom Fest did is he slowed down the ride, made it that this little person could be on there real slow, and it worked. Yeah, it worked, but, yeah, families are families. Okay? All right, anything else? Okay, all those who favor to postpone, both yea, opposed nay? All votes cast J, no votes cast N. Jane, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-381, amending Section 95.35, weeds, litter, stagnant water, adding additional provisions, which include all specific nuisances listed in 95.02 of the McCook City ordinances. I introduce ordinance number 2024-381 by title, and as the clerk, please read the title. An ordinance of the City of McCook, Nebraska, amending the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, Chapter 95, entitled Nuisance Help and Sanitation Section 95.35G, weeds, litter, stagnant water, adding subsection F, listing specific nuisances, provide that this ordinance should be made a part of the City of McCook Code of Ordinances, repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances conflicted with and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Ordinance number 2024-381 has been introduced, read by tile, and I move to approve on this third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all those who favor both yea, opposed nay? All votes cast J, no votes cast N. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is an update regarding the comprehensive plan and zoning subdivision regulation projects.
As the council is aware, we are in the middle of rewriting our comprehensive plan and zoning subdivision regulations, where you would sell with the help of our consultant, the line associations. Craig Bennett, Jason Colmes are leads over at Millers to kind of help lead us through this process. It is a lot of work. It's a very long painstaking process. If we ever had a chance to read the zoning regulations, you will understand just how painstaking it can be. But what we are doing as a staff, we met with Millers, it was probably about a month ago or so. Barry Mooney, our building inspector, and Tara Cutter, myself, who drove up the car. We wanted to make sure we're on the same page, make sure that we were comfortable with the provisions that they had made based upon our suggestions. They were forwarded back over to us, and so Tara, Barry, and I, every day, we spend an hour and a half just going through the zoning regulations, making sure that the proposed zoning regulations are understood by us, so that way we're comfortable with them. So it's taken a little bit of time, but we didn't do that the last time, or I don't know, there is a zoning regulation update back in 2013. So our anticipated finish date with our review of the zoning regs will probably either occur, it's going to occur sometime in August. Based upon our conversation with Craig, we believe we need to give 30 days' notice to everyone just to ensure that everybody's had a chance to review it before we take it to the next round of meetings with the zoning committee that was established by the council. So we'll have that meeting with the zoning committee, then we'll take the final product. If there are no changes, if there are changes, we'll make the revisions, if not, we'll take it through the planning commission of the council for approval. Same thing with the cop plan. I haven't seen the draft of that yet. I know that Jason's working on that, so. Then also subdivision regulations, they are being worked on as well at this time. So it's a slow process, but you want to make sure that you do it right. Really, when you start talking about planning for future events, the heart of the planning effort comes from the established zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and the cop plan. The cop plan is extremely important because it really establishes what our future goals as a community are. So like I said, it's taken some time. We're on the same page with Millers. We just want to make sure that we are comfortable with what gets presented when we have our public meeting, where the committee is wanting to get together, take a look at those things. And then we'll send that out to the planning commission and council for final passage. But we hadn't talked about it for a while. I think it was important that we brought this to the council, so the council knew exactly where we were at. I assume hopefully by August, we're done with our reviews. That way we can have meetings in September.
Any questions? Is there any council comments tonight? Okay, at 6:17 PM, I declare there being no further business to come for the council. This meeting is adjourned.